Good evening to the Brookfield Selectmen's Meeting of Tuesday, February 6, 2018. Would you like to raise and join me in suiting for it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the Brookfield Emergency Squad from January 2018.
You have that motion?
The second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Announcement: The Adena Archaeology Project Presentation Public Meeting. Eric Johnson, head of the Archaeology Department of UMass, will present the findings and recommendations from what was called the Campground Project at 6:30 PM, February 13, in the banquet room of the Town Hall. Snow date is February 20. This project confirmed the existence of the Adena-connected cultural living on Quayback Pond 3,000 years ago, if not longer. Contact Clarence Snyder at (508) 637-1377 if you have any questions. Tyler Wolin, District Aid to Senator Ann Goby, will be holding office hours at the Brookfield Town Hall from 2:00 to 3:00 PM Wednesday, February 21st. All are welcome. Does anyone else have any?
I should also do the open space, that the open space and rec plan sensing sessions, the final four sessions to go through the output of the earlier meetings, will begin with the seniors meeting on February, good, that's 13th in the morning, at the church, the Congregational Church, where we'll go through, for, over, four meetings, we'll go over each of the same material four times to make sure everyone understands what was said, what was learned, such that we can move forward with the open space rewrite.
Okay, good. Beth, do you have anything?
No.
All right, well, now we'll move on to our public access portion of the meeting.
Well, after public access, I have one alibi. I have one additional.
Before?
Uh, real quick.
You can, yeah, go ahead.
If that's all right. We do have a good, solid draft of the charge for a memorial committee, to reestablish a memorial committee, but we're still looking for volunteers, so I just wanted to kind of put out there that if anybody's interested in looking, at participating in developing the plan and trying to figure out how we might honor folks that have served in the post-Vietnam era, because that's as far as people are represented, at least physically on our green, that they should contact Karen in the Selectmen's Office to join that committee.
That's fine, thank you. All right, Mr. Mulcraft.
I don't want to be critical, but I'm going to be a little critical tonight. You did a review with our Treasurer last Selectmen's Meeting, correct?
Mm-hmm.
It was supposed to be a review.
It was a review. I don't know what else you want to call it.
It was supposed to be a review of how she was doing in her performance. You were five months, five months in the running and giving her the review, and when you talked to her, you never, you three never voted or said anything of how she did in her review. You mostly talked about what was going on in the Treasurer's Office, but you actually never did give her a review of what her good points were, or what you wanted her to improve on. You never, you never even made any decision on that. Could you tell me why?
I think you missed the meeting.
We were there, we gave her.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't a review, you were supposed to give her a review for her, herself.
It was a review. We asked her what her goals were for the year.
And you, no.
For the, yes, we did, David, it was right.
You asked her a couple of things, but you still didn't, you did not give her a review and say, hey, what you wanted, or what you didn't want, and you didn't give her an evaluation. You didn't come across and give her an evaluation.
Ken?
So.
I have heard, before, I've been in this meeting three times.
Uh, excuse me, this is, I'm doing my public access.
No, no, he can answer, but he, he's just making a comment, Dave, he's allowed to do that. Mr. Cleveland?
Okay.
Can I advise you what, I have heard the contact, and I've contacted her three times, and has some presenting problems, she comes to the meeting, and she hasn't been able to stay lately, so, um, she's very happy with the job.
I know she's, she's learning very well, and this is what we're told by the staff.
Now, that's, you're missing my point, Wendy. You were supposed to give her a review, and you did not do it, so that's, that's wondering why you didn't give her a review. It was five months late as it was.
Well, we had explained to you that day, the reason the holidays came around, it was around Thanksgiving, and, it was around Thanksgiving, and then Christmas came quick, and so then we decided to do it, and we did.
You guys are up on policies and procedures all the time, and bylaws, and you don't even follow them yourself. Three months means three months, Linda. So, do I get an answer why you didn't give her an actual review?
Madam Chairman, no. I'm going to go to the Chair and say, Madam Chairman, we, this board, met in a meeting where we reviewed the progress of the Treasurer, and to suggest that we did otherwise is incorrect, and so therefore, I think the discussion is ended.
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so you didn't, you just discussed the Treasurer's Department, but you didn't actually give her a review?
I would.
We, we gave her a review, I don't know what else you would call it, my idea?
He said, she said.
That's what.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying.
That's what.
Okay, all right, I made my point. Same old, same old, you, you know, you, if you want to be leaders and managers, do it, but don't, you know, don't just try to brush it off, Karen, it's like you're doing everything else in this town. So, okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Chairman, since the topic came up, I would suggest that this board, and you specifically routinely were in contact with the Treasurer's Office through a number of the months of her coming on board, and at no time did you feel that we had some, an issue, we had good guidance from Ken, and that she was progressing well, so that there was no need for immediate action on our part, and that we had a very successful meeting the other day, and I would think it, contrary to the individual involved, that we did not do our job.
I agree.
We, we did. I stopped in, I stopped in many days when I'm up here, and Keith and Mr. Ossenow, and the Treasurer in there, and I, I always ask for the progress, how things are going, and he always tells me, you know, her strengths and weaknesses, and he says she's doing very well in the position, and.
And perhaps, Madam Chairman, some of the conversation was, was a little subtle for the audience, but there was a lot of communication regarding training levels.
Yes.
Particular processes and procedures that we did get a status on to a certain extent, or at least a, a timeline or goal for when some of them that haven't occurred yet can be completed, given that the, the office that both those individuals walked into had, in essence, been vacant for several months.
Yeah, it was vacant for several months.
So, perhaps it wasn't necessarily clear enough if we were doing it for an audience, but for the purposes of actually communicating with the individual doing the job, the information is there. So, I know I do still owe, because I still haven't drafted up my notes from that, I'll be forwarding those to Karen, like we said at the meeting, so.
I'm satisfied with what she's doing. She's doing excellent, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't think that there's really any other need for discussion on that. I'll just continue to, you know, monitor her and check in, and I'll get back to the rest of the board on how things are going.
Agreed.
Okay, why don't we take things out of order, because we have our hearing at 7:00 PM with the CBGG application. My next one here on the agenda is a resignation.
Maybe.
Here, it's right here. Uh, this is for, it's a resignation from Janet Serry, who has resigned from the Brookfield Cultural Council, and, you know, it's kind, she, Janet's going to the Cultural Council many years, and she's done a fantastic job, and, you know, you hate to take, see people step down, take the resignation, from this resignation, so I'd like to make a motion to accept it.
You have a motion to accept the resignation, no regret.
Second.
And Karen, in all in favor? Aye. Karen, if you can get her out a letter of appreciation. And then, they would also like to appoint Rosemary Kadowski on 17 West Main, 17 West Brookfield Road as the new member.
And you have a motion to that.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Um, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we have here, Beth can sign this. And then we'll get this.
So you need a motion?
Yeah, oh, oh, yeah.
Got it.
Okay, then we have another one. The next one, the next one is a, is a resignation, is an appointment, and this comes from Reddick Clark of 42 Allen Road. He would like to be, please consider me for the appointment to the Capitol Improvement Committee as the liaison to the Advisory Board, and Primmity Eaton also requested to, and he agrees with it. And so I'd like a motion to, uh.
To appoint.
Appoint Mr. Clark.
Wendy, do you have that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, now we'll have, we're going to go on to, we have special use permits, and we have one for South Pond. We'll take them all together, and vote on them all together. We have one for South Pond, for the Mass Bass Alliance, and that one is 414-18. Then we have another bass fishing for, what's the name? It just says bass fishing, and the name of the person that submitted this is named Miss Mike DeSette. And this is for, didn't you, this is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's the same one, I'm sorry, okay. The next one is for 519-18, it's for South Pond, for the Mass Bass Alliance, the same one. And then this one is also for 826-18, for Quayback Pond, for the Mass Bass Alliance. Okay, just those. Let's add the motion.
So, a motion to, to approve permit, fishing permit?
To assign them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, a question. Karen, do we have an ability to extract the numbers of permits that we have issued?
Yeah, and we only did that once, correct?
All right, so what was the number?
About a dozen, since.
And so what was that number, just so?
I don't know. It's so easy, I have it on the spreadsheet, so I can do it, don't you want?
Yeah, well, I'm just thinking for the open space and rec plan, that we ought to document that. Yeah, thank you, Karen.
And you're not in vehicles?
Yeah. I think that would be good information.
I have something under other today. I received a letter when I was here this morning from the Treasurer's Office, and that was concerning, they, they notified, they want us to be notified that they did an internal review regarding the recent retirement account issue that came before the board, and that was decided that the party who had the issue must deal directly with the investment company. And they would like us to, a motion from us, you know, that we've, we've.
Concur.
We concur with them that that's what it is, and you can just read the letter that came from, because we had discussed this before, and we all agree that that's what it is, it's really up to the person to.
Work with the Karen.
To work, to work with the, with the department themselves.
That's not Karen, that's just there, but I'm going to talk to her about that.
You'll go talk to her?
Doesn't have to be right now. I wish she'd come down.
She's on the phone.
You can ask her, if she wants to, I haven't, I haven't checked.
So I think my only concern with the letter is that it's, it's not that, I, it appears that the concern was that the Treasurer's Office felt that there was some sort of indication of fault within the Treasurer's Office, or that the employee was under the impression that it was, that it was, that the Treasurer's Office was at fault, when the primary concern here was related to the accuracy of the, of the mailing of the information, so.
I mean, that is a letter to us, they're not, they didn't send that on to them.
Right, I understand that.
They just wanted our support behind that, that, you know, we agreed to.
You guys will come back to us if they're not satisfied.
Yeah, I know, if they're not happy, they will come back to us.
Right, so. Okay, so at the end of the day, the town got the money to the, to the place it needed to get to, and the primary issue is that Great West didn't get it to where it needs to go from there, in essence.
To Karen.
So.
So we have a motion, the Treasurer working, the affected party.
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
And we have another here, one question.
I would like to just add one thing to that, though. I mean, I support that overall, but if the Treasurer's Office has any information that could be of use to the, to the employee, then I would ask that they include that in whatever communication they have.
Oh, well, they, well, she already, I think the employee had already texted her, I mean, she emailed her this week.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just saying, as if, if in the process of doing that review, is if as a courtesy, they can include.
Yeah.
Oh, sure, they will, they said they would, they just wanted our support on this, one of the things they were asking. Okay. Another question, Mrs. Clancy, have you found a volunteer yet for your elder bus? Karen's going to know here. Hmm?
You don't speak loud enough.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Mother's question.
Okay. All right, we had a note here asking if Mrs. Clancy has found a volunteer yet, are we still searching?
Elder bus.
The elder bus.
Oh, the elder bus, that was a while back. Did anyone else have a volunteer late for that?
I have a volunteer.
Yeah, it was about, it was about a year ago, I think.
That policy that gets handled through West Brookfield.
Okay.
If you have any more, I'll dial updates.
The Medicare will get people to the doctor and wait for them to return home, which is very reasonable.
I believe that that organization is if we wanted to, to have a seat at the board in order to get.
Well, if they want to go shopping or do something like that, if they don't wait for them, they tell me here, and they'll be there, but the Medicare picks them up, takes them, and waits the doctors, the drugstore for them, and, and prices are very reasonable, and we take them, as well as our brand, it's into them, and West Brookfield organizes them.
Does anyone else have anything to bring up?
We're going to wait for 12 minutes.
We're going to recess for 12 minutes.
Maybe what we can do maybe is, you know, adjourn until 7 o'clock, and we.
So a motion to adjourn till 7 o'clock?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You can say if you'd like.
We're reopening, I'd like to close this reopening meeting at 7:00 PM.
You have a motion to reopen at 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM. Did you sign away?
I did.
All right.
You're reopening our meeting because we are having a public hearing tonight, Tuesday, February 6, 2018. And what it is, it's, it's for FY 2018 Town of Brookfield CBG application. The Town, the Brookfield Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on February 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Brookfield Town Hall, 6 Central Street, in the banquet room. The public is encouraged to attend this hearing to discuss the town's FY 2018 application to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for up to $800,000 in community development block grant funds. Should the meeting be canceled or not? I won't read that part. The Town of Brookfield is seeking input on potential grant-funded projects, potential projects under development for the application currently include, one, a housing rehabilitation program, two, construction of drainage, water, and pavement improvements in the Hayden Avenue and Hyde Street neighborhoods. These projects were identified as priorities that are consistent with Brookfield's community development strategy. All persons with questions or comments regarding the grant application will have an opportunity to be heard. Those unable to attend may send written comments to the Brookfield Board of Selectmen, 6 Central Street, Brookfield, Mass. If awarded, the Central Massachusetts Planning Commission will assist the town with grant implementation and administration. The banquet room in Town Hall is handicap accessible. Persons who require special accommodations to attend the meeting should contact the Selectmen's Office at least two business days prior to hearing for information. You can contact Andrew Lowe, Brookfield Board of Selectmen, January 26, 2018. And now I will turn the hearing over to Mr. Andrew Lowe.
Thank you. So, my name's Andrew Lowe, I'm here from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission with my colleague Connor Robichaud, and tonight we're here, as the statement said, to talk about the town's FY 18 CDVG application. For folks who are here in the audience, there is a handout that's essentially an outline of what I'll be presenting, that's available in the front here, and we do ask that folks sign into one of the two hand, sign-in sheets that are going around the room, if you haven't done so already. So the purpose of the hearing tonight is twofold. The first is to present and allow discussion of the town's FY 18 CDVG application, and the second is to request, at the conclusion of the hearing, that the Board of Selectmen vote to authorize the application to be made by the Planning Commission on the town's behalf. So to give folks a little bit of background, if, for those of you who aren't familiar with the program, CDVG is a federally funded grant program that's been around since the early 1970s. Larger communities get this money directly from the federal government each year on a non-competitive basis. For smaller communities, money is given from the federal government to the state government who operates a competition for the small communities each year. So, under the current rules, towns are limited to $800,000 per year, or a maximum of 1.35 million over two years. So this is a competitive grant program, there's, there's no guarantee that the application will be awarded. I will say that Brookfield has had a pretty fair degree of success in this program. Over the last 20 years or so, it's been part of about eight or nine different grants under this program, either on its own, or as part of regional grants awarded to other neighboring towns. So, what are the, the projects in the application this year? Well, this year, we have two projects to, that are ready to apply for. So, the, the first one I'll discuss is the Hayden Hyde Improvement Project. So that's a project to construct drainage, water, sidewalk, and roadway improvements in a residential area that has recurrent flooding and other infrastructure problems. It also includes engineering oversight of the construction work, and that project is a continuation of a project that's currently seeing its design wrapped up right now under the town's last block grant. And the preliminary estimate we have at this point is for about $539,000 for that project, and we should have a more final cost estimate within about 10 days for that. The other project in this year's grant is the Housing Rehab Program. Again, this is one that the town has had in the past, most recently through a grant that was to Warren in collaboration with Brookfield, and that program would provide assistance to eligible low-to-moderate income homeowners and investor owners of affordable housing to make code-mandated repairs and other home improvements. Right now, it looks like we can budget about six units of assistance for that, and that the overall budget would be about $170,000. Grant administration would be about $90,000, and the total grant would be right up at the $800,000 limit that the town can apply for. So, so how did we arrive at these particular projects for this year's application? The Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, of whom I see several members in the audience here, so thank you for coming, it held, I believe we had five meetings that touched on this year's application over the last three or four months, talked about a number of different project possibilities, and voted to prioritize the ones that we're looking at for this year's application. Other outreach included the Community Development Strategy Forum that was held here about a month ago. We've had letters and surveys that were part of these projects in the earlier phases last year. We've held a public event for Hayden and Hyde area, project area residents. We've had social media website posts, we've had media coverage, and we're here tonight at the public hearing. So this application is due on March the 2nd, and generally speaking, the awards are announced in July or August each year. There is a little bit of uncertainty with the federal budget for this program, so that may delay the timeline a little bit, but we still expect sometime over the summer to hear about the results, so. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions or comments from either the board or from the audience.
Wait, can we start?
We hope we can start in July.
Any other questions?
So, well, we have just a moment. So, Andrew, any, anything else in your meetings that, as far as next up, kind of projects, or anything of that nature that we should be aware of?
Yeah, we, there was one other project that we looked at, which would be to design some infrastructure improvements over in the Green Street area, which has had some drainage and, and I believe water issues as well. We, we developed that project fairly far along, and we couldn't make the income survey that we have to do, work, we didn't quite get the response rate we needed, but we intend to try to complete that survey over the next few months so that it could be applied for in a future application.
So it would be a future $800,000 application, or?
Um, yeah, I mean, it depends on, on what the award is. So if the town were to be awarded $800,000 for this 2018 grant, you'd be capped at $550,000 in the subsequent one. So it's, you know, we try to stagger things so that you're applying for the smaller budget projects in the years when you're capped at a smaller budget, so things like design and planning. So last year's grant was under $400,000, and that was all design and planning, and this year's grant is larger, and obviously the intent here is to, to construct one of the projects that was designed last year.
So maybe the important thing, because the camera's running, is that we're unable to really evaluate that project properly in the timing that you, you would have needed, so, so that it's really important that the residents of these areas, when we're asking for this kind of data, that the data's important, because it puts us in line for free money.
Absolutely, yeah. We, we can't do most of these projects without support from the residents of, of whatever the project area is, you know. If we do send out a survey, we do ask that folks respond to it, because again, most of these projects have to be surveyed for, generally for, for the approximate household income of the residents, because this, all these projects are, are intended to help people who are from middle income down.
Yeah.
And we, you know, if we don't get a high enough response rate, we can't do the projects, so, it's as simple as that.
And if the town were to have to do the work, it would then come out of the tax dollars.
Yes, absolutely, this is, it's still your tax money, but it's, you're sharing it with everyone in the country instead of just here in town.
Yeah, in your pocket, yeah. Thank you.
Andrew, maybe you could enlighten them on actually vacant houses actually exist?
Yes, Bruce is touching on is that vacant homes in these project areas are under the state's rules counted as over-income folks, so that makes it even more important that, that folks in neighborhoods respond to the surveys, because, you know, some of these neighborhoods have a few vacancies, and it, it really makes the math more difficult for us to try to get the surveys completed.
Okay, so help me understand that, if you've got a house that's been abandoned for years, it's in an area that's, in essence, you're trying to mitigate blight, yet you can't even, like, if you have substantiation documentation, can you submit that in lieu of the residents, like, response?
No. I've had this discussion with the State Department of Housing and Community Development. You did mention. You did mention the term blight. There are other ways to potentially approach projects through what they used to call slum and blight designation, but that, that's a whole different process, and it has different projects that are eligible under it. So, you know, it's, it's kind of a balancing act as to how we, you know, try to approach the projects that the town has, has asked us to look into, and it, for the most part, we have, we are stuck with doing income based projects.
Okay. Is there any, I don't wanna call it supportive homework that the town can do to try and, like, do you have a, a list of addresses or what have you that was part of that Green Street project that, I mean, what's the process to follow up with the folks that didn't get you any?
Well, I, I will say that there, there was a good degree of support already from the Water Department and, and others who helped me-
Okay.
-to do the survey there, so, you know, we, I certainly am happy to work with the advisory committee and others in perhaps area residents to try to finish the survey. It was very close, it was, you know, a couple of houses more, had they responded, we would have been able to do the product, depending on where their income came in.
Got it.
So then, because of the conversation that you're having on the blight or abandoned housing or whatever, is it important that we maybe prioritize those areas or projects that we might want to go after so that we get smart to make sure that those houses aren't there when you finally have to do the survey?
Yeah, it, it's, it's, as I said, it's, it's kind of tricky because the two national objectives, that's what, essentially, it's the prerequisites for doing any projects under this grant program, there are three of them. One is to serve people who are predominantly low to moderate in income. The other is to prevent or eliminate blight. There is a third one, which is to address emergency, urgent need, which is almost never allowed. And the trick is that different kinds of activities are eligible under the two different national objectives that we use. So, to do something that's predominantly a subsurface pro, infrastructure product, so you're looking at water, you're looking at drainage, you can't use slum and blight national objective for that most of the time. So that's why, in the particular case of Green Street, we were looking at an income based project, because we, you know, the, the need for that project was really for the drainage and, and as well as the water. So, I'm happy to explore potential slum and blight survey, and again, it's, it's an archaic term that we don't like to use much, but it, that's the legal term.
I was just, yeah, from a perspective of that a vacant house would seem to imply that there is no income there, yet it gets counted in the opposite direction.
Yeah, absolutely.
It gets a little confusing, but if we put together a list of homes that qualify for slum and blight, then we pass those off to Andrew, that could be an application in future if-
Sure, it, you know, I don't wanna get too far into the weeds here, there are different kinds of slum and blight as well, so.
But we have, we do have vacant, abandoned, half burned out houses, things like that, and, I'm speaking out of tune, but they'll never be removed.
Yeah.
They need to be removed.
We'll do it.
We did try to get in this program with the Attorney General's Office with that last summer.
Yeah, but it was voted against.
I know, and the Board of Health didn't wanna get involved with it, I don't know if we could try again.
Well, I think that, that, where I was headed with my questioning with Andrew was to, in fact, circle back around to that, if there were priority areas that we should worry about, we should be worried about them. The, the good news is, as I understand it from the town's attorney, we now have those first three that we applied for back in September to the courts to actually be able to take them down. And, and in January, we were allowed to, and, and early February now, I think the tenth of February, the third one would go before the court so that we would have a sign off. But unfortunately, with that, that's a very good example of where the town is going to spend nine thousand dollars, of the town's money, that, to take them down. And, and again, it's, if we can hook up one of these programs where we understand your priorities as far as where we can go, we have that, and then possibly we could find some grant monies to be able to take those buildings down, so it wouldn't necessarily be the town's money.
And I do know that the advisory committee did include looking at some of those properties in this community development strategy that was approved last month, so it, it's definitely on the list of things to look at.
Unfortunately, it's a long process.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't get there overnight, and you don't fix it overnight.
They'll do anything within a year.
Yeah.
That's the earliest it can happen.
But we chip away at it.
That's all we can do. And it would make, you know, if we could do something, it'd make those neighborhoods more desirable, people would want to move into the community.
Absolutely.
So does the members of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee have the information around what we do have on the Green Street?
No.
I know it's not part of this.
Some of that information I consider to be kind of private.
No, I don't mean the financial information, I just mean the general project plan, like, what we think we need to do. That's, that's all I'm asking about, just to get a better concept of, of what's potentially on the table for next year or the year after, if we wanna go after it.
No, we, as a committee, don't look at the surveys, don't study the surveys.
No. Well, no, and that wasn't what I was asking, I was asking about the project.
We keep that in a confidential file at the point.
Yeah, yeah.
And some people, some people afraid to fill out that survey because they feel that the arrangement of funding for a household is private.
Yep.
But I had to go door to door on a couple of them before, and actually, after hours, and physically explain things to them, and say, nobody's gonna see this except for the state to just approve this project, and that's all it is.
Right.
And you actually don't write down your income? No. Do you fit between a range, or how? Here and here, how you live in.
Yeah, it's, you know, there's a checkbox, you know, are, how many people are in your household, two is your income between, you know, thirty thousand and sixty thousand.
Right.
It's, it's a big range on it, so it's, once I explained that to some of the people, there were more to sign the paperwork and check off the box.
Yeah, and plus probably, I think one of the things that I, I was trying to reach for is that perhaps if we did, figured out a better way to support you all in communicating, hey, this survey's coming to the house, if you live on one of these streets, it's not some telemarketer trying to get your personal information or whatever, it's from the town sort of thing.
Well, that's why it's a lot better for town employees actually to go knock on doors and stuff, try to get them the door. That way they see the town truck there and everything else, and they're not gonna be afraid to open up the door. Or if you get a, a resident, Paul.
Right, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, somebody that we can, that we can just, you know, put in front of people to understand that, no, if, if you see Ken at your door, the reason why Ken's at your door is because, you know, he's the guy that's trying to get this information so we can go off in line, so.
We try to knock on the door of the house, he, they just, you can hear him talking inside up in the corner, voice, and, and, when there's, we need more neighborhood support.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if you could get somebody in that neighborhood itself to go down there and do what they, and explain.
That can be very effective.
Yeah, so, so just as a, you know, just, just as a conversation point so that we know what we're doing in the future to get better at it, that's all, so.
So, Madam Chairman, what motion do you have?
Okay, we, we have a motion. Would we like to support and approve the submission of the fiscal eighteen CDBG grant application, the activities as presented today, with allowance of minor budget or program adjustments, and furthermore, to authorize the Chair and CFO to sign all documents required for the application?
You have that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion at all? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
These are good projects. Not that you guys can already know them, they're good projects. Thank you.
Then I would say motion to adjourn at seven twenty-one.